Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to an end at 6:35 PM. Welcome all those that might be watching. And we're going to have Mr. Jordan Elling do the invocation again for tonight. We certainly appreciate you doing this, John.
Thank you, sir. A pleasure and honor. Whenever you're ready, I'll do the invocation and then you guys can get to work.
I think we're ready.
Okay. Bear with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we are just so grateful again for this opportunity to come before you. We're in these very difficult times with so much at stake, where we ask that you give these leaders some wisdom and guide them and give them comfort knowing that they're doing their best for the people of Canyon Lake. We would just ask all of these things in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Thank you. Councilman Green?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Green, would you do the Halloweekus and the Flag Salute?
Yes. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Here we go. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Castillo?
Here.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Aaron Cranz?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session?
No, we have nothing to report out of closed session today.
Thank you. Are there any changes, Mr. City Manager, to the agenda?
No changes.
No changes. Then I'll be happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. We have a presentation to Captain Sims. Would you mind stepping up here, please?
Is that the public safety report, sir?
Yes.
Or Captain Sims isn't here today?
No. Captain Sims is not here. Maybe we can still present the proclamation to the Lake Elsinore Station. Maybe we can just make sure that we get it to the Paris Station.
We'll be happy to do that.
We have a...
Sure, come on out.
We just have a proclamation that we wanted to present.
We're replying.
Just right here, it's fine. Thank you.
Initially, Captain Sims had indicated that he would be here this evening, but he must have...must be dealing with other pressing business.
Okay. It's easier for me to read this side.
Yes, so it is.
This is in recognition of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. The Paris Station, whereas the city of Canyon Lake entered into a contract with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department on July 1, 1996, to provide public safety for the residents of this community. And I know I've done this before, so I can skip a lot of these "whereas's."
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going down. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies. This mask is for beauty. Sorry. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, California, recognizes and thanks the men and women of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, the Paris Station, and thank them for the bravery and professionalism they have shown...sorry... while serving the residents of the city of Canyon Lake. Due to this eighth day of July, 2020. And it's assigned by the entire council. It's our pleasure to present this to you. And if you'd like to say something, please do.
Yes, on behalf of Captain Sims, thank you very much. I will deliver this directly to him.
Well, I certainly appreciate it. Certainly he's been here, and we're able to replace him for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor, before you move on to the community and present something, I just want to make a quick announcement, if I may?
Of course.
I just wanted to congratulate our city manager and his wife, Annie, who are expecting the baby a little later this year. So, I just wanted to congratulate them.
Congrats.
Those are the best announcements. Great.
Very cool.
Sorry for having a little trouble talking through this mask, but that with a little bit of a cold, you'll have to put up with me. Do we have Darcy on the phone?
I am on the phone, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We're anxious to hear about the DVNDW update.
I guess you are. Well, the first thing I'd like to report on is tomorrow, July 9, from 8 to 12, there will be intermittent service interruptions for the streets of Locklomen, Caliensee Court, and Village Way. And if you recall last month, I reported about an anthracite issue we were having within the system, which looks like a black granular sand. It's actually like a high-level carbon or coal, and that was from a filter media failure that we had over a year ago. That's still in the system. So, we have engaged some consultants, and we are trying to get that taken care of. So, you'll notice on Canyon Lake Drive South, there's a number of boxes over what would be meters, and water meters have been removed for those residents. A filter has been placed to capture that anthracite material so this doesn't cause any issues to plummet. And those filters are changed and monitored regularly. So, that will happen again tomorrow between the hours of 8 and 12. The second thing I wanted to talk about is a recent algae issue for the Fourth of July. So, I had requested of the Water District to do some additional testing in addition to what Meswa does, and expand the number of testing sites beyond where there's some significant algae presence. And a lot of those places came back non-detect, which means there was no issue of any hazardous algae bloom. A couple of places came back as caution, and one Emerald Cove, which would be off of Grape Box, between Lenny Rabbit and basically the intersection of Sedent and Grape Box, and we had a morning level of hazardous algae. I just really want to thank the city for unloading some of the information that the district let out this morning on what ways we can do to prevent algae. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Casey Castillo for sharing that information again. I had also requested last night of the PRA and President Chris Poehl, who I believe is on the phone, that at our next meeting between the city, the PRA, the Water District, that perhaps we include Meswa and focus that meeting on water quality and potential solutions, kind of define who's responsible for what, and give the residents of Canyon Lake a better understanding of what's being done about the issue. This is not a new issue, although I can tell you as it gets warmer and the lake level fluctuates, it becomes a more critical issue. The only things that are going to fix it are water movement, air, and less runoff. And hopefully, people understand that when they overwater their lawns, the nutrients go right into the lake, and they basically are feeding the algae. Of all the service connections in Canyon Lake, 30% of our residents overwater based on their water budget. So, if someone could just take a few minutes and look at their sprinklers, make sure they're not running off into the street, which then runs directly into the lake, those are some of the things that we each can do to help reduce the amount of presence of algae. I also want to thank the residents of Canyon Lake. Many people have reached out to me by phone or email, offered some suggestions, shared concerns. I try to answer every single one. If I have missed you, please reach out again. I think it's important that we keep the conversation going and be as transparent as possible about the efforts we're doing to address this. This summer, we are not running a Canyon Lake water treatment plant. I think I've reported this on a number of times because of the PSL, PSL constituents that are present at a higher level than what is required by law. We have recently engaged Kennedy James Consulting Fund to do a complete assessment on the Canyon Lake treatment plant, how we use it, what looks best in the future, and how we can be most efficient. And also, how are we going to treat for constituents and contaminants that are coming down the pipeline that will soon be regulated? So, all of those elements need to be addressed. I had asked them to look at all things, whether it's also including an additional pipeline from the state water project so we can have more fresh water in the lake, so that we can maximize that asset, increase water reliability and resiliency, and improve the overall quality. For years, I've noticed there have been band-aided approaches, and I'm really tired of putting big money after that. So, although this study will take some time, the immediate benefit for Canyon Lake is that we have a higher lake level. And hopefully, the longer term is what has improved water quality in the lake and improved water quality in drinking water, improving taste in odor issues. And finally, the last thing I'd like to report is recently, a consumer confidence report was sent to every single water user in our service district. I would encourage you to take some time and read it. Do not be alarmed by the language that the UCPA requires you to put in there. It's required language. It's not meant to scare you. It's meant to provide information, and if you have any questions, I'm always available to answer them. Mayor Aaron Cranz, that's why I have this meeting. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you so much, Darcy. Council, have any questions?
I'd like to just say, Director Brooke, thank you so much for stepping up and really advocating for Canyon Lake in terms of the extra sampling. I know that a lot of our constituents were very concerned about the appearance of the algae, and I saw you actively addressing those concerns on social media, and the testing was very much welcome. So, thank you, especially in advance of the holiday weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council?
No.
No. Thank you so much, Darcy.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. You too. I understand we're now going to have the pleasure of having our new PRA President, Mr. Chris Poehl. Are you on the line?
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide this update. It's my first, and what I hope will be a monthly update next year. This year's board is off to a good start, even in the midst of COVID-19. The community is doing well. Our PRA is doing well. We're stable, and we're in the midst of transitioning as we move back and forth and out of the emergency areas, but hopefully move to normalcy again in the near future. Back in May, when our board took over, we restated our board principles, and that included formalizing our core values, our vision, purpose, and goals. These things are listed on the website, on the board webpage, which I find interesting. It's way too long for me to just read right now. But we do aspire to be a restored style of community of communities. We're looking for unity in our community. For the total residents, our goal includes expanding our communication and collaboration with the city and surrounding communities. That's one of our goals amongst five major goals. Getting closer and a very collaborative, transparent way with the city is extremely important to this board. In all regard, we do very much appreciate the working relationship that has now developed between Eric and Chris, and the way that has worked out is we have maneuvered our way through the rapidly changing county, state, and federal orders related to COVID-19. I'm pleased to say that our Fourth of July was calm, rejected to be calm. This is the reports that we got last night. I actually kept my family home. We watched the fireworks from the courtyard over the tops of the houses. Our guest injuries were down. Everybody seemed to be doing their part to be safe. We are pleased to have been able to display what we paid for to the community and the north surrounding, and we're glad that it was done in a safe manner. Last night at our regular board session, we approved a list of projects for this year. And we maintain our facilities and endorse our community. It's a fairly aggressive agenda with a long list of projects on it that we're excited about moving forward with. Many of these are funded out of our reserves, and of course, that money has been saved up with return, and it's something we need to continue to move forward with in a profitable manner that allows us to put that money to work in our community to help with the economic development. Our goal is working to engage our core community through our committees and through our workshops and our open sessions and the decision-making process. We're in both operations and project development, and we're working to develop five-year priority plans. I think that's worth saying because we did go through a period of time where things were quite closed down, and I think that caused us to become a divisive community, and I don't think it really helped our relationship with the city. I really look forward to this whole thing getting much better by doing this. As you're all aware, there's a brewing controversy related to political signs and flags and banners. We are moving to permanently enact our emergency rule regarding signs and flags with obscene content or fighting reports. It is based on the law and what our legal counsel said that we can say. We had an emergency rule that was put in place very quickly a few weeks ago. It didn't go nearly as far as I would have liked, or many of our members would have liked. It did go as far as we could within the law. We have other members that feel they have the right to do some of those things. And that conversation about banners and signs and flags will continue with us in the coming months, and we're thinking about possible limitations on the size, location, on flight signs and banners that are posted for all different purposes. We have a special situation in that we have a community setback in our common areas where most of our rules are centered, but then the actual member property is not covered by any of those rules, and those are the things that we are considering. Even if the cities are challenging political terms, as divisive within our nation, we understand that, as divisive within our community. I wish that we could legislate civil behavior, but it's not possible. But we do need to work and think and seek ways together, the PRA and the city, to encourage our residents to be respectful of all opinions. And I have no idea how to do that, but I'm very interested in having that conversation and seeing what we can do. We appreciate and look forward to continuing to collaborate with the city in our monthly roundtable meetings, and we'd like to again schedule a joint meeting of our board and your council when the time is right. We need to team and work together on coordinating our project approval process, as Darcy mentioned, issues surrounding the lake and quality of water, as well as continuing to seek mutually beneficial economic development opportunities. So, I look forward to this year. I look forward to working with the city. I look forward to advancing the goals and vision that we have both in the city and for the PRA. Thank you for this opportunity to address you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hey, thank you so much, Chris. It's certainly a pleasure to hear from you, and we're certainly looking forward to doing this every month, in Menso, of course. Does the Council have any questions? The PRA President?
I just wanted to say, Chris, congratulations to the board and look forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thanks again, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to public safety update, and I think the sheriff has been patiently waiting to give their report.
Good evening, honorable members of the Council, city staff, and residents, being from the comfort of their home. I am Captain Michael Loon, under command of the Lake Elsinore Station. The Lake Elsinore Station will be assuming the public safety services as it relates to law enforcement for the city of Canyon Lake, due to the city of Menifee's Menifee Police Department going into service on July 1. A little bit about myself, I have 30.6 years of experience. I have operational experience in corrections, patrol, homicide, and management. In about six months, I will be retiring with 31 years and two months on the department.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Well, we're going to leave you in good hands with Lieutenant Rouse, who has a future, about five years ago. But Lieutenant Rouse will always see the law enforcement contract for the city of Canyon Lake, and he comes to you today with 24 years of service, with operational experience in corrections, investigations, field operations, and administration. Lieutenant Rouse will be presenting your statistics for the last quarter, and he'll be here to the end of the meeting if you would like to converse or you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council members, my name is Jim Rouse. I'm going to be your new liaison, working out of the...I'm going to pull this down. Working out of the Lake Elsinore Station. Like Captain Muhan said, I have 24 years of experience. I just came about a month ago from working out of Southwest Station, liaising with the city of Temecula. I started my career with Lake Elsinore, spent about seven years there, working patrol operations, police team, and I worked the lake operation, so, and boat training and have experience with that. Wish I could say that I've worked Canyon Lake, but I have not. Many investigations have brought me here, and I spent time coming through, going to Canyon Lake, I'm going to Coral Valley, and just doing investigations in general. So, I will be out and about, looking forward to meeting everyone, meeting all the citizens. If you see me out, come up and introduce yourself, and we'll talk a little bit. So, I will be coming up here from time to time. I will be patrolling, but I will be managing.
We certainly welcome you and your expertise, and if there's anything you need to know about Canyon Lake, just ask any of us. We'll be happy to do that.
I look forward to making this as seamless as possible, just moving from one station to the next.
Thank you.
I don't think you'll see much of a difference, to be honest with you. I'm going to give you the public safety report for the month of June. Our deputies respond to 478 calls for service, which is down 70 calls from 548 from last month. We had 10 Part 1 crimes. Those are four aggravated assaults. Those are mostly related to domestic violence calls. One burglary, one theft or larceny, four motor vehicle thefts, so vehicle thefts. We also had two arrests for public intoxication, issued 12 traffic or parking citations, had one DUI arrest. I think that was also involving a TC that happened here. We had five traffic accidents and five total arrests. So, one thing I am impressed with when I was looking at these stats is how low the stats are and how safe of a community it is. So, definitely looking forward to keeping these numbers at this or lower. So, any questions?
I do have a question. Yes, give us a minute. Yes, I know you guys took over...excuse this mask, but you took over on July 4. So, we had 145 service calls that day, that evening? Was it evening time?
No. I did some stats just for the Fourth of July weekend, which was Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And I have those. We responded to 145 calls for service.
Okay.
In those three days, we had two arrests, one for DUI and one for public intoxication.
This one here?
Yes, that one there.
Got it.
And one traffic citation, one DUI, and one TC.
Okay.
It was a pretty uneventful night.
Yeah, pretty like, considering. And were you guys able to staff up with the overtime deputies that were requested by the PRA?
Yes. Luckily, Lake Elsinore City had theirs canceled, so we were able to move some staff from the city of Lake Elsinore to the city of Canyon Lake, and we also moved, I believe, I brought 12 volunteers over for the Sheriff's Department from...the Sheriff's Department now has cohesive volunteer group. Some are specific stations, but there's one group, so we're able to pull from all over the county. We were able to pull in 12 volunteers also to help out.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work. We have reports from the fire chief. Is the fire chief calling in?
Chief Barnett, are you on the line?
Yep, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, City members, for the month of June with Canyon Lake, we responded to 71 incidents. Seven of those were both alarms. Fifty were medical calls. Three were for public service assists, one ringing alarm, and 10 traffic collisions. During that same month of June, in June 60, we responded to 75 calls of service that were within the city limits of Canyon Lake and outside. And we did not have any incidents that were of any significance around the Fourth of July weekend, nor did we have any traumatic incidents inside the city of Canyon Lake during the month of June. We did have two incidents in which it went over the 10-minute response criteria for the synopsis, and both of those calls were staged calls with the Sheriff's Department in which they cleared the firing and the responding, one of those being 12 minutes long and one of them being 11 minutes long. And that's it for the public safety report. Do you have any questions?
Council, have any questions?
So, I have two packets. Are those both for June 2020?
What's that, ma'am?
I have two packets. Are they both...they don't look the same. Are they...they're both June?
Yes, both of them are in June.
Okay. Thank you.
One on 6/9 and one on 6/20.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to you, Gina, with special code enforcement.
So, we've had a very exciting, busy month. We did resume residential rental inspections. We're allowing the ones that are comfortable with it. We're wearing masks, and we're wearing gloves. We have hand sanitizer. The city has implemented temperature checks in the morning to make sure that nobody is running a fever before we go out into the field and start conducting those inspections. So, we want everybody to know if they're ready for one, we're here, and we will get those done. We have approximately 160 that are still pending, but they are rolling in, and we're rolling them out. The most common things that we have seen are electrical cords, that are temporary electrical cords being used as permanent outlet devices, which they're not designed for. One of the biggest contributors to accidental home fires because they're usually sometimes overloaded as well. The second thing is we're missing batteries in smoke detectors, which are designed to help our residents when they're sleeping, and carbon monoxide detectors. The reason I bring that up is because although we're not a gas city, they are still required. There is no exemption in the code. I wish that there was. The building official, the building inspector and I have discussed it back and forth, and they've been very clear that until or unless the state amends the code, they are required. So, I believe because we're not a gas-run city, that's why people don't believe they really need to have them. So, we're not getting any trouble with compliance. Everybody's been completely agreeable. It's a wonderful program, and I really think that we're going to be happy with the results once people get more comfortable and familiar with the idea that we're not there to nitpick. We're there just to make sure the residents have, the tenants have what they need, and the homeowners are also secure, too. They don't have to worry about a tenant complaining that it didn't comply when they moved in. So, that's going on with that. The fire inspections did start. Wonderful, wonderful to be out in the businesses and with the communities open. They're thankful to be open, and it is actually so nice to bridge and get to know the businesses that are in here. One thing on the report I did want to point out was after the governor changed the executive order and closed indoor dining again, Tyler Ferrari was very responsive, developed and put in place a process and a program with Jim Morrissey and myself, and we spent Friday morning making sure everyone had applications to stay open and continue to move forward. So, I really think that we're trying to do everything we can for our businesses. The fire inspections have been interesting. I do want to remind everybody that the fire extinguishers have to be mounted. For you to be able to really have access to it and use it when you need it, it's got to be on the wall. And most of them are saying they haven't been inspected in 20 years. I don't know if there's any truth to that, but we're going back and we're working with everybody. So, again, the programs are moving forward, and they're going really well. Any questions? Go ahead.
Um, I was in my Canyon Lake office today, and I got my hair and stuff.
I was in my Canyon Lake office today, and I got my fire inspection done, and it was very painless. It was actually very pleasant.
Turn your mic off.
Am I not loud enough? I got my fire inspection done today, and it was great. They were in and out, and I appreciated that very much. I wanted to say thank you to our code enforcement. I know I email you a lot about the trash that's out on the 74, people dump couches and mattresses and all kinds of nasty stuff, and every time I email you, it's gone real quick, so I'm very appreciative of that. I know a lot of residents are too, we don't want to see that driving into the north gate. I did have some questions about the regulations on the BLM land. It looks like 92 vehicles, like it's going up, and campers and fires, and that's always something I'm freaking out about, so can you give us more info on that?
Our BLM land has turned into Acatia Wells and Glamis, because it's local, people are I kept thinking these numbers are going to go down, and it's been going exactly the opposite. The good news is we're not getting a lot of second offenders that we recognize, which means they're being cooperative. That's also a good thing. The Rangers, the BLM Rangers are out there with us consistently. We are out there regularly and every day of the weekend right now, thanks to the city manager extending us the affordability to have an extra person on Sundays. The weekends are, we prevented, I can't even tell you how many fireworks, at least 35 vehicles full of fireworks from going out onto the BLM just on the 4th of July. We have traffic signs up everywhere that we possibly could put them, that said stop, don't enter, this area is temporarily closed. Administrative Services Borja approved the printing of the signs within the week, because we knew that we were going to have issues. Although we did have a fire out there, it was farther on the Paris side, and it wasn't in our area. If we could just get Riverside County Parks and Rec to help us with an MOU or something, we're seeing 92, they're probably seeing 392 over there in that corner. And Cal Fire tells us all the time, comes to Station 60, tells us, we rolled on a call over there, they are full of them, you can't even see them, they're hiding behind this ridge, and it's the same answer every time. We're doing everything we can within our jurisdiction and where we are allowed to be.
So the camping and fires, are those the same people, or are these other people who are back in there?
These fires prohibited, one was found by Jason, the fire prevention BLM Ranger, and the other one was found by our officer Lopez. And he, Lopez is here in the morning, as early as 6:00 AM, making sure it's cleared out and there's no fires. So it's been two rings this month, which isn't unusual, because it is the summertime, so we do, those numbers haven't gone up, which is good, from last year or the year before, et cetera. The numbers that are going up is the ATV and UTV use, it's off the charts. I'm talking groups of six to eight buggies in a row.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah.
Hi Gina, question on the fire code inspections?
Yes.
Obviously, probably have started, which is a good thing.
Yes, we have.
How far are you into the inspection cycle?
We've conducted approximately 32 since Monday.
Great. Have we done our occupancies that are restaurants and bars yet?
We're working our way up to the restaurants so far. I've done one, and the Canyon Cowboy, which I did immediately after the certification training. All of these fire inspection reports, we're meeting at the beginning of every month with the fire marshal side of Riverside County Fire Department. Steve Swarthout, he's going to be getting copies of every report. And if I have any questions, we look it up, we go back, and we take a building inspector.
Good, good, alright.
So they're going good. The restaurants are actually the ones passing everything. Everybody else is not so much.
Good job, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? One thing Gina, just, just to want to comment that even though we are almost an all-electric city, people still do have a tendency to sometimes park their cars in their garage and immediately leave a car running for some time or another to keep it cool.
Yes.
And this is very dangerous as well, with carbon monoxide detectors work for that just as well.
And heating units that weren't intended or designed for the home.
Right.
Yes.
Just my only comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Gina, one thing, fishing game. I ran into an officer, I think it was Sunday last week, and he was saying that they'd been patrolling the area a little bit, of guys netting fish. Have you come across that?
We actually haven't caught the net fishers, but we have had a couple complaints of it. I believe if they're doing that, they're doing it way before the sun comes up.
Okay, because they've gotten, I've asked them to reach out to Chris or you to try to work on something in regards to teaming up on some stuff, because when they show up, everyone freaks out, and they have boats that they drop in, and they have lights, and their goal is to capture all the equipment, because you're talking about a couple thousand dollars worth of stuff. But he said he's already done two successfully, people will call in, and he's done one, two this season so far, and we have, we've had no idea about that or anything? Okay.
I did know that they caught one person, but honestly, I found out about it in the Friday flyer.
Yeah, so I don't know, maybe we, we kind of get that introduction, because I told them about some of the issues that we're having with, you know, people violating, you know, camping and whatnot. He goes, look, we're all over it, we can serve two purposes here. We can also be a presence when, when they need us, and also we can help out, and we like to do these raids at night, or we do them early in the morning, in like 3, 4, when they're getting set up. He goes, a lot of people will set up and they'll pretend like they're fishing, and it's a complete, you know, then when no one's looking, then they'll go ahead and throw the nets in real quick, and then they'll go away from the nets and do something else that doesn't look like they're associated with what's going on over there. And he goes, that's when we catch them in the act. So we try to tell people who are calling us in, let us know, but don't, don't make a big deal about it, because then the surprise attack will go away. So maybe we can utilize that as another resource too, because it's kind of all hands-on-deck right now, and we're not getting enough help, but they are absolutely willing to do that, so.
Yeah, definitely, we'll definitely flex, do whatever they need us to do to get the support that they need from the city.
Cool, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, we're going to entertain any public comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to submit their comment electronically by sending an email to publiccomment@cityofcanyonlake.com. Please note that I will be accepting email comments during this meeting in real time. If you're commenting on an item on the consent calendar or on items not on the agenda, I will read the email submissions into the record during the public comments portion of the agenda. If you're commenting on a business item or public hearing, I will read the email submissions into the record at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. During this period of social distancing, electronically submitted comments should be no more than 250 words and include the person's name and agenda item number. We have no comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, we're going to move on to the consent calendar.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the City Council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion.
Anybody have anything they want to remove?
Number five, Mr. Mayor.
Number five?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, number one, I have two questions on the claims and demands.
Anyone else? Well, they don't need a motion to approve with the items that are being approved.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion, that we approve the consent calendar with taking up items, is it one and five?
I second. Just, I'm sorry, just for clarification, the claims and demands would be item number two.
All right, to clarify the motion, I move that we approve the consent calendar, besides removing item number two and number five.
Okay. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
I'm sorry, thank you. And this requires a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items two and five.
Okay, would you like to discuss items two and five?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, page 15, please.
Page what?
15, page 15. And it's the middle item, 25912. It's a sexual assault, domestic violence, forensics exam, and it has a price tag, a follow-up exam of $1,900. I'm just wondering, is there any cost recovery for that, or is that what it costs us to have these tests done?
Larry, what I'm going to hear, what you're hearing, pulling?
I'm not pulling it.
I know, but what specifically?
I'm asking specifically, is there a cost recovery for 1,900? Yeah, it's on page 15, Randy.
Mr. Mayor, if you may, I can answer this question, and Chris, you can chime in on this, because this is a common discussion that we have at our finance budget meeting. Casey, as well, can chime in. So a lot of times when they do these forensic exams, it's done 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM in the morning, so it's, they fire it out, whoever can accept it, it is what it is. It is budgeted in our overall payment that we give to our Sheriff's Department. So, you know, it is a line item, but these fees change regularly, depend on what the use is.
That's all they needed, okay, thank you. And then on page 17, please. 17, it will be towards the bottom, 25928, boarding up of residents on Buttercup. Do we assist residents in foreclosure, and do we go after the 773 for a cost recovery? Yeah, so let me ask our code enforcement supervisor, Gina Dixon, to address this. Okay, thank you. Gina?
This was actually related to a search warrant on a marijuana grow that the Sheriff's Department did serve, and we did receive full cost recovery, which included the deputies' time out there, all of the enforcement staff, the building inspector, and the cost of the board up, and the homeowner has already paid.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed, thank you.
Mike, how you doing, bud? This is our favorite topic. So just a quick question for you in regards to CDBG, how much are we going to be looking at this time around, and how much do we have left in our account? I know we're still trying to look at some stuff, so what, what is this going to do for us?
So what this is here, is just allow us to continue our program with CDBG.
Okay.
That's all this is.
That's all it is.
That's all this is, that it actually outlines the three fiscal years that we can continue with the CDBG program.
Has there been any discussion yet of allocated funds?
No, it's still a little bit premature for that.
Still premature? Okay, perfect. That was my question.
Okay. Mike, while we're here, since it's pulled, it says we're ineligible to apply for state. Is that just because we're piggybacked into this group here?
Because we're part, what we do is we allocate our CDBG funds through, through the county.
Okay.
So, so because we do that, it makes us ineligible to participate from the state program.
That's it?
Thank you.
Those were all the items that were pulled? We need to have another motion on those.
Do we have to take them up individually?
I think we can do them together, but we just need a motion to approve items two and five, followed by a roll call vote.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, this is a motion for items two and five, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve consent calendar items two and five.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven, business items.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask, 100% of the Senate?
Committee Member, City Council, tonight, staff is bringing forward a recommendation for City Council to approve the agreement in award to CTI Pacific Greenscape for the Landscape Irrigation Maintenance Service along Railroad Canyon Road. Currently, our service agreement right now for, for our landscape and maintenance on Railroad Canyon Road has expired, which is why we move forward with the, with a bid, which we advertised in February of 2020. We had an opening bid date of March 19th, where we only received one bid, and that was from CTI, excuse me, Pacific Greenscape, in the amount of $54,000. That amount is actually a significant decrease in what we have been paying before with CTI, which is about $63,000 each year. So, with that being said, staff is asking for council recommendation to approve the Railroad Canyon Landscape Irrigation Agreement with CTI Pacific Greenscape in the annual base amount of $54,000, and authorizing contingency of 20% for extra work that may be needed throughout the duration of the contract. This is all, the 20% along with the 54 is also something that's been already pre-approved as part of City Council's budget approval in June. However, in addition to, to this agreement, we're also asking to give the authority to the city manager to execute change orders not to exceed 10% in case it's determined that we may want expanded services in other areas of the city.
Good job.
No questions?
Saved us some money.
Yeah.
Yep, good work, good work. Appreciate you, Mike.
Any public comments?
No comments on this item.
Okay, well, I think you were going to read that motion to us, is that correct?
Yeah, said, but to just clarify for the council, the motion would be to approve the agreement with the insertion of language in the paragraph regarding amendments, authorizing the city manager to execute change orders not to exceed 10%. So I need a motion and second, please.
Motion?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, we're going to require a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Is this language going to be in the future of these types of agreements as well?
Yes, we do plan on including that language and making it standard in our agreements going forward.
Okay, good, all right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item number eight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an item that was worked on by our management analyst, Tyler Ferrari, so I'd like to ask him to come up and make the presentation on this item.
Good. Good evening, council members. Item number eight, the staff is recommending that we approve the agreement with Animal Friends of the Valley for animal control services. The contract is similar to as it has been in the past years. The only difference for this year is that instead of a three-year contract, it's a one-year contract, and the reasoning for that is that AFV is currently looking into including Menefee into, into their range of service as well, and that inclusion would bring down our costs. So currently, we pay 3,500 per month for about $42,000 annually to AFV, and so the inclusion of Menefee would bring that down, and they're still working on how much it would bring it down, and Menefee would be included in the next year. So when we approve the contract for the next year, the cost would be lower. Any questions?
Let's, go ahead. I see it's not increased since last year, so it's...
Right, no, the costs haven't been consistent.
Okay.
Good.
Good, thank you.
Be doing the interface with the Animal Friends of the Valley, I think it would be fair to keep it for another year, and knowing Menefee's going to come in, hopefully it'll come back in the second or third year, so I think it's moving in the right direction.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Tyler.
All right, thank you, I'll be right back.
All right, thank you, I'll agree with you.
Are there any public comments on this?
There are no public comments.
Okay. Well, once again, I believe we have to have a motion and a roll call vote.
Motion?
I move.
That's fine, pick it. I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Mayor Paton Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the agreement.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item number nine.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, I'd like to ask our city attorney, Stephen Graham, to give the presentation on this item.
Mayor, city council, this item is in response to some questions that the city has received during the rollout of the single-family rental inspection program. We've gotten some questions about, well, what happens if I don't consent to an inspection? The staff report and the original language of the ordinance, we felt made it very clear that you have every right to decline to consent, and the city's ability at that point is to go, remedy at that point is to go and seek an inspection warrant under state law. But, again, we've received the questions over and over again, although to date, every inspection has been done under consent and has been successful. We thought it'd be best just to clarify in talking with the city manager, let's just, you know, instead of leaving it kind of unset what says, "Seek all remedies available" law, let's just tell people exactly what we intend to do, and make it also clear that if they don't consent, they're not going to be held in violation of the chapter. We don't want anyone to be afraid that they're going to get a ticket or something for saying, "No, we don't consent." That's never been the intent of the ordinance, and, you know, perhaps it's better just to say it very explicitly, just to get past that particular issue. And then the other thing, I actually, after we drafted the urgency ordinance, I did receive a question regarding section five-two-two-zero-eight-zero-A. That section says, "The fees shall include without limitation, an initial inspection fee, a reinspection fee, and a fee to file an appeal." Now, the city hasn't established a reinspection fee, and so we've gotten some questions about, okay, well, it says "shall," but you don't actually have a reinspection fee, what am I supposed to think of that? And so, I think to, you know, again, bring clarity and to be consistent with the intent of the council, let's change that "shall" in subdivision A to a "may." The fees may include an inspection fee, a reinspection fee, and a fee to file an appeal. And that way, you've already established the fees, it can be consistent in that way. In the future, if you think a reinspection fee is warranted, you can establish it, and we don't have to change the ordinance again going forward. It isn't the kind of thing I would have recommended, but since we're here cleaning up, why not? So, that's not actually in the urgency ordinance that you have in your backup, that was just some that got brought up today, but if you do pass this on a four-fifths vote, because it is an urgency ordinance, I recommend that you direct us to include that change from "shall" to "may" in section five-two-two-zero-eight-zero-A. That's it, unless you have any questions?
Council, any questions? Any public comments on this?
No public comments.
Well, then entertain a motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Mayor? That includes the recommendation of-
"Shall" to "may."
To "may." Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, roll call on that.
So, we'll make that revision, and then we'll get the ordinance to the mayor to sign today or tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Once again, this requires a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Mayor Paton Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve ordinance number one-ninety-nine, an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Canyon Lake, California, amending section five-point-two-two-point-zero-seven-zero of the Canyon Lake municipal code regarding single-family residential rental inspections.
Good, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item number ten, short-term rentals.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. As we made a call several months ago, responding to numerous and ongoing complaints and concerns from the community about short-term vacation rentals and some of the negative impacts, such as noise, trash, excessive cars and parking issues, the city implemented a temporary moratorium on short-term rentals, short-term being anything less than, anything less than thirty days. Since that time, staff has investigated further, looked into the impacts that these uses are having within, within the city, and are bringing to you today an ordinance that would permanently prohibit short-term vacation rentals within the city of Canyon Lake. I've asked our code enforcement supervisor, Gina Dixon, to provide a little bit of a presentation tonight, explaining some of the things that, that we're encountering in the community and some of the negative impacts of these uses. So, Gina?
Thank you.
Would you like to use this, just forward here?
So, the main problem in our community is really commercialized short-term rentals. The true home sharing, we don't really see that a lot in Canyon Lake, that would be where the homeowner actually lives there and rents out a room. That is not what we see here in Canyon Lake, so we aren't seeing a true home sharing environment. We're coming across our problem homes, I call them problem homes because it's a problem for me when I'm getting texted all weekend long with Facebook posts about the short-term rentals that our residents are living next to.
Sorry.
Because they always tag a council member, and it's wonderful for our council members. So, the problem with the commercialized short-term rental is that they're not monitored, and the complaints that we get are from, like, our travel lodge, that he's paying his TOT, but nobody renting out their space inside is paying the TOT, and it's really unfair. I'm not here to determine that one way or another, that's just a complaint and concern. The biggest complaint we get is that it's attracting disruptive visitors. Now, some of the reason for this is because zoning codes have commercialized rentals in the appropriate zone area, not a residential zone, and when you do that, the inevitable disruptions of tourism and travelers going through are limited to that space. Our community, as unique as it is, and the wonderful attributes that it has to offer in the way of amenities that a lot of cities don't have, brings them inside the gate. And one of the biggest things that we see are, they even turn these homes into concert venues and flop houses, where I say that we have homes that rent enterprise vans and shuttle people in from outside the gates, so they're not calling in fifty people, they're making five trips in a fifteen-person van. Now, two of those homes, we've been able to find the van, we've been able to find out that it's an enterprise rental car, and we're working on that. Short-term commercial use of these rentals is extremely hard to investigate, because everybody's trained that, oh, they, we know the owner, we're not paying any rent, and so they, they're coached on what to say when we get there. Having the additional coverage on the weekend, because the BLM land is so wonderful for people these days, also has it so that we have an enforcement officer in the evenings on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night. So, we're now able to collect evidence and data that shows they're short-term rentals. So, now what we have are people that are coached on how to get around the thirty-day minimum loop, on how to advertise it. So, now, I have code enforcement officers in their beats, monitoring their Airbnb, VRBO, FlipKey's, or something like that, and there's a couple other sites that we monitor, where they're advertising for thirty days, but when you look at their reviews and their calendar, there's not really people there every day. So, now, we're having to collect evidence in that way, that's now requiring daily monitoring. These things are time-consuming, and in my opinion, a disservice to our taxpayer dollars. People move into residential neighborhoods to raise families and be community members. They don't want to live next to a party house or a concert venue. The amenities that they complain about that are being overcrowded and overrun, those aren't owned by the city, so I don't address that topic, however, that concern does come in. We have increased conflict and a rise in police calls for service. Now, the identified homes, that we've collected enough evidence, and I say that because it, again, takes time, our residents aren't happy with that time, but everybody gets due process, and you have to have enough to prove to court if we go there, that it is, in fact, a short-term Neighbors don't like living next to them because they don't know who's coming and going, and they don't know who to call when they have a problem. We've got trashcans overflowed with lids, because people don't know, you have more people there than a regular family, you have more trash. It doesn't all fit in your trashcan, so then what do you do? Start dumping it in the neighbor's trashcan that's out at the curb. Property maintenance is sometimes a concern. This is probably more on the POA's side, hanging towels on the balconies, well, things they don't want to see living next door to it. However, some of the property maintenance concerns we can't address, we don't have a code for that. What we're trying to address and track down is that it's a short-term rental, not being ridged out for less than thirty days. So, blocking driveways in Canyon Lake, as council members probably know, we have a lot of homes that back up to, what, when I was a kid, we called it an alley, now it's a traffic easement or a shared flag lot, that gives them access to the backside, they drive up a long driveway that allows them access to theirs. Well, people in short-term rentals don't know they can't park there, well, then our residents can't get in and out, because they're parked in what they thought was part of their driveway, but another house or two or three has to get by. These are things that happen with our short-term rentals. We don't get calls on every one of them, but when we do, all the complaints are standardized, and they're the same. Again, once we can prove it's a short-term rental, we can start charging for extra calls for service to our deputies. That doesn't mean with calls for service that we have pending, that we're going to be able to respond right away. Calls for service are prioritized. So, these are just the complaints that we get, I'm sharing them with you on behalf of the community members and their concerns. Some of them, a couple of them, we've had the owners say, "We're really sorry, we didn't know, we're not going to do that anymore." The other ones, not so much, we're still working on them. I do have on the PowerPoint additional slides, things that the state is also concerned about. When you raise, bring in short-term rentals, you raise the median rent price, and you drive out families and what would be community members. This is a huge platform for the state of California right now in what they consider to already be a housing crisis, which is why we no longer limit accessory structures. So, now, by design, are, are accessory structures going to be used to actually house families and more people, or to bring in money and profit off of the secondary units that the POA and the city can no longer regulate? Just questions. Again, right now-
May I, real quick, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Do we know, if you had to give a guess, how many calls, complaints have you received in regards to specifically short-term slash Airbnb, VRBO?
At least twenty-two.
In, in what, the lifespan of you working here, a month, a week, a day, like, where are we talking?
In the last two months.
In the last two months, at summer time, so that makes sense.
Yeah, during a stay-at-home order.
Okay.
This is, this is during a stay-at-home order. I don't know what it's going to be when it's not a stay-at-home order.
Okay, fair enough. The other thing, Tyler, if you could, can you pull up Airbnb on your phone and just do a search for us real quick, and just give me a number?
A sec.
See, see how many, do you have that?
Yes.
You have the number, how many interactive?
So, there's currently sixteen on Airbnb, there used to be twenty-two.
Okay.
Twelve on VRBO, and three on FlipKey.
So, you're, you've mentioned pandemic times. Right now, the hospitality industry is through the roof, so motorhomes, RV share, outdoorsy, I own a hotel, those kind of things, it's, it's crazy right now, because people have been cooped up for three or four months, so I'm actually surprised the numbers are as low as they are, especially because Canyon Lake is a destination location in Riverside County. When you receive a complaint, are you receiving a complaint from a neighbor? Are you receiving a complaint from someone that lives close to it? What kind of complaints are they coming?
They're all from neighbors that are abutting or adjoining properties.
Okay.
Because of noise?
And it's never just one, parties.
Noise?
Parties.
Parties.
Parties, okay, so that makes sense.
Marijuana odors from the locations is the number one thing that sends them over the edge. They'll start putting up with the noise, but once the marijuana odors are falling out all over the place, they, they, they're done.
What has the, what has that for recreational use? I'm, I'm thinking we-
But it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be inside your house. You're not supposed to, it's not supposed to be filtering out, overflowing into all those adjoining and surrounding properties. This is, people are complaining about the haze outside on the patios and the balconies, the inappropriate behaviors at the pools.
Have you, what's the, you know, Larry, I mean, our, our, well, the sheriff's department's here.
Yeah.
So, my guess, if you gentlemen don't mind, kind of giving us your insight a little bit, if you get a call from, you know, Canyon Lake, Lake Elsinore, about marijuana use, how do you handle that? Because clearly, you know, things have changed now. So, the example that she's given is, is people are smoking outside, probably on a balcony or whatnot, and the neighbors called and said, "Hey, look, they're, they're smoking marijuana outside." What's that call look like for you guys?
As a patrol response?
As an enforcement standpoint.
We, we could talk to them.
Yeah.
And let them know that's bothering the neighbors.
But that's about it, right?
But if they're on a private property, it's-
That's what I thought.
If they're walking down the street, they're in public, it's not legal.
So, there's, yeah, there's nothing that can-
The only, the only thing we can do is check age, and if they're not twenty-one, then it's illegal.
Yeah, I understand that, but, so, I think the crux is shut it down, and that may deal with this industry, but they still could have neighbors that are having a party, I mean.
When they're complaining about inappropriate behavior and stuff like that, it's, it's not because it's a family, it's because it is a partying location.
Correct.
And there are more people in this commercialized residential area, this commercialized home, than would normally be there.
Yeah, I got you.
You know, a regular family that is using recreational use, nobody's complaining about that, they're all over the place.
Do we have a stance, Mr. City Manager, or the POA, is that with this? Has there been any conversation? Because I know that they don't allow Airbnb, VRBOs.
Sure.
There was a huge issue that took place this weekend with someone securing a campsite at Happy Camp and displaying their motorhome slash RV up for three hundred dollars a night for Fourth of July weekend, and everyone freaked out, and they were trying to figure out who the owner was. So, what's their stance in this regard, do we know?
I don't want to speak for the POA, but I can tell you, in the discussions we had with the POA, which took place several months ago, when we were preparing to implement the moratorium, the response I received was all positive, that they, that they welcomed this, that these have been a problem for some time in Canyon Lake, but that the POA has the enforcement capability to, to deal with it, and so, nothing but positive response from the POA, and so, I believe, my, my understanding is that they're, they're very supportive of this.
Jeremy, July fourth in Happy Camp, every year is a problem.
Yeah.
This has also been, other communities have addressed the same issue and have put a moratorium on them, and have stopped these, because of the same complaints. Usually, they turn the house into a party house, and it disrupts the neighborhood, and I think that is probably the number one driving force of this, so I think it should have teeth, and, and I'm in favor.
So, since we're having, you know, a discussion on this, Tyler, just, I had him do a quick search on Temecula, that they passed their ordinance, it's a thousand dollar fine if they're caught doing an Airbnb. Is there, what's the council's stance on, you know, if someone wants to do an Airbnb, they have to pull a business license, they have to give the address? they have to pull a business license, they have to give the address? And if they don't, they get cited?
No.
No.
That should be an automatic.
I think, I'm looking at section C of the criminal law. It says, "Fourth violation is a misdemeanor." So, is the, of the fifth, are we, what's the fifth?
I can't go higher than a misdemeanor as a city attorney.
No, I mean, my question is, is it now going to be another offense? Are we going to-
I would keep going with the misdemeanors. And since you brought up the violation section, the violation section was written with best practices in mind going forward, this is what our violation sections are going to look like to give Gina and my office maximum flexibility in enforcing our ordinances. So, it has nuisance abatement, it has declaration of a public nuisance, it has a very broad statement about how each violation's a separate offense, and then it does have that criminal penalty section that allows the $1,000 fine and allows the immediate filing of a misdemeanor if appropriate, but also gives me the authority to knock it down to an infraction if necessary. But I lose that discretion after the fourth violation, I can't keep infracting these. So, I'll have to go for a misdemeanor on the fourth violation.
I would just say, speaking of probably one of the controllers who gives tags in every Facebook post or gets Facebook message or text, and then I screenshot all of that to Gina, I know that this is something that our community is very serious about.
Are you suggesting something?
Well, no, yeah, that was my suggestion, is that have a discussion on if we're going to regulate this, if we're going to make the decision as a council just to get rid of it as a whole, or, you know, make anyone and everyone who wants to turn their house into an Airbnb, they have to register it with the city and they have to go by certain guidelines and rules, and if they don't abide by those rules, then they get fined, just like any other business would. And, or do we just completely exit? It's a discussion.
Following Councilmember Smith's point, if you do go the path of regulation, most cities would not just require a business license, they would also require the payment of TOT.
Exactly, that's my point, that's my point.
This is something that has to do in conjunction with the POA, though, I would assume. No? I thought they were opposed to having any of this.
That my understanding is that they are, yes, but your statement was, we'd have to do it in conjunction with the POA, and no, we could set the policy as the city, separate from the POA. I'm not sure that that would be entirely responsive to the complaints we heard from the community and the reason why we put the moratorium in place in the first place, which was that the people want these uses to stop. But certainly, the council has the flexibility to go in that direction.
Do we need to bring this up for further discussion?
Well, then, that would be up to the council, but we have it before you tonight for approval of the ordinance which would place the prohibition on short-term, short-term rentals.
Council, have any other questions or comments? Are there any public comments on this?
No public comments.
Mr. Smith, maybe you had something else on?
Because I researched this so heavily, looking into the complaints of our neighbors, the one thing I would definitely say is, if we're going to consider, if we're going to responsibly, responsibly consider the mitigation of the effects that the home has, the only way that cities and places have seen compliance is escalating the fines and having somebody responsible at the premises when it's being, available to respond within 20 minutes to neighbor complaints and contacts for the neighbors. So, if we're going to responsibly consider this, you want to consider, the fines have to be pretty big for, to get compliance, and you have to have a responsible person that is local. So, otherwise, the cities are like, this just doesn't work.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, that's an extremely good point.
Yeah.
The other thing, you know, with regulating this, if we decided to look at a program, they get all their business from online, so it's not like the properties can be hidden. You know, so, as far as, you know, they're not going to get the business elsewhere, else we're not going to know about it unless the neighbor complains anyways, and then this actually might open up a different opportunity as well, because if people are renting out their property on other sites such as Craigslist, OfferUp, or Letgo, then this would allow us to enforce that and find out about it if a neighbor did call and complain, and now because we have an ordinance in place that relates with funds, relates with a fine, the city could, you know, reap the benefits of that, and it would give people the opportunity, you know, to have a business license and do it properly as well. It's just an idea, you know, I think that in a city where we need to think outside the box, I think we need to look at every single ordinance that comes across our table and look at ways to maximize the efficiency, but also, also give our code enforcement the tools that they need for, if we are going to do a direction like that, that they're fully prepared to handle, you know, like those calls that you had mentioned. So, I think that would be extremely important as well.
Right.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just have a comment that I think the fines, $100, $200, and $500 are pretty high.
I think so, too.
Was the response, is that a set, or is, how do we come up with that number?
So, those are the set fines for infractions, it's a typical infraction schedule. I can tell you that my anticipation is that we're not going to be handing out a lot of $100 fines, but there may be situations where it's warranted. My anticipation is that Gina is going to write $1,000 administrative citations as often as she can, and then I'm going to have to go enforce those. But if I do get misdemeanor citations, you know, for example, if I get three misdemeanor citations for someone and then they shut it down, I might take pity on them and drop it down to the minimum fine that I have available to me, because compliance is the ultimate goal, it's not racking up the money. The money's there to bring compliance, not the other way around.
Gina, I have a question for you, just because you've been so hands-on with all that we've been doing, especially with our, you know, rental agreement program and, you know, our business licensing program and the inspections. If we went a route where we allowed Airbnbs here in Canyon Lake, but we highly regulated it and we made people fill out, you know, a business license form and they did an inspection, and then from there, if there were any complaints from their tenants, from their clients, if you want to call them, their customers, and they were highly fined if they were caught noise violation, if they were caught using the neighbor's trash, you brought up a good example, marijuana use, what would that look like from your standpoint? Would that be a good thing or a bad thing? You think it would unfold, you think it would open up some avenues, you know, that would allow us to help out other community members, if maybe they're doing their home off-site, they're not, they're not using Airbnb or VRBO because we can only see the 12 or 15 or whatever's listed, maybe they're doing it other ways? Or would it just be better just to completely exit, from your standpoint, from the boots on the ground?
That, that's, the unbridled honest answer is, I don't know. I don't know, because it's hard to, the courts have a liberal interpretation of who is my family now and how, what is a single family? So, the solid answer, in all honesty, is, I don't know. Either way, either way we go, it's going to be difficult. So, I want to tackle what's best for council and the city, our residents. But as a homeowner, I don't want a next door to me. Do you?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
A couple of things kind of align on this topic. Several months ago, when we were discussing potentially putting in place the temporary moratorium, one of the things that I believe was included in the staff report was a statement that staff at least believes that these uses are simply not compatible with this particular community. We're unique, most of the city is behind gates, it's private. This community is, you know, the POA, inside the POA's gates is for the members and their guests. I think the public has made it very clear to us that they don't want commercial uses, they don't want people profiting off of POA amenities that are, that are meant for, for the members. In addition to that, the way Canyon Lake has developed, many of the properties are very close to one another. We're already dealing with crowding on the streets and parking issues and, so, in staff's initial recommendation to implement the moratorium, when we're studying this and looking at it and coming to the conclusion to make that recommendation, staff's feeling was that it just, the use is just not compatible with this particular community. In other communities, it may make more sense, but Canyon Lake, while it is a resort-type community, it's a resort-type community for the members, not, not for people to book a vacation and make this a destination and come somewhere else. The second thought that I have is, is one of enforcement and challenges there. The flat-out prohibition assists us with enforcement. If there's a flat-out prohibition, then we should not be seeing any listings on Airbnb or VRBO. We can send a copy of the ordinance to the companies that have those sites and say, "Here's our ordinance, do not, you should not be listing anything on these sites." Whereas, I fear that if we go the other way and we allow and permit the uses, that's going to be much harder to enforce and is going to create a large amount of work for our already stretched enforcement staff, unless we want to budget for increased staffing for code enforcement. So, just a couple of thoughts that I had to consider.
Thank you. Excuse me, and I think you're fairly well-stated. I believe that's the feelings of the council. Speaking for myself, but from what I'm hearing, I think that you've appropriately addressed the situation, and yes, we're all a unique community. Sometimes we're blamed for some things, but we're all unique. So, thank you for that interpretation. Are there any other comments from the council?
No. I would just suggest that if we're going to move forward with this business item, that we increase the fines to match what looks like is going to be the original number of $1,000 across the board. I mean, if other cities, it looks like, City Marietta's looking it up, I think Menifee's starting to do it, too. If other cities are going to go, Temecula kind of led the charge. So, you know, it's up for discussion.
In response to that, I would say, as written, it already authorizes $1,000 per incident. The language that we're looking at for the infractions is only when I criminally charge someone.
Okay.
I have the authority to drop some of those charges, the first three specifically, down if necessary, if in my discretion I think it's necessary. But the first one, A, allows administrative fines up to $1,000, and Gina will likely be starting there. So, I think that giving that enforcement direction to staff is very helpful. I don't know if you need to change the language of the ordinance to get there.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, well, thank you all. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Almost the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 200.
Second.
Second. Once again, I believe this goes for a real call vote.
Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Mayor Paton Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Kranz.
Aye.
Motion to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 200, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, California, adding chapter 5.25 to the Canyon Lake Municipal Code regarding short-term rentals.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, have a discussion on sign ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an item that came up as we began to approach the election season and as there's been significant discussion in the community regarding banners and signs that have been popping up, and I will let our city clerk give a little bit more detail here, but it seems like we don't have the problem that we thought we might have had. We discovered that we probably don't have the problem after we published the agenda, but I'll let, I'll let the city clerk give a little bit more explanation.
Thank you. So, as we're getting ready for our election season, just a reminder, the nomination period begins next Monday, and putting together the candidate handbooks, section in the candidate handbook talks about sign regulations, and in looking up those regulations, the city attorney and I looked at the municipal code and realized that there was some language that was out to date in our current municipal code. So, we brought this item forward for discussion. Yesterday, we found out that there was, in fact, an ordinance that was passed in 2018 that addressed these issues, unfortunately, it was never codified, it was never sent to the vendors, so it never got included in our municipal code. Fortunately, that was a mistake that happened a couple of years ago, but we are taking that as an opportunity to fix the municipal code, and going forward, I think we're just going to try to clean things up a little bit, but like the city manager said, we don't seem to have the problem anymore.
No. It's a, it's one example of many situations that we've run into where we're needing to modernize and update procedures at the city. We've signed a contract with a company that, every time an ordinance is passed, we send it to them and they update our municipal code in real time, and it will all be made available online through our website, and so, it will be searchable, so these sorts of things should not be happening moving forward once we get that, that set up. But we're spending a lot of time getting things where they should be and should have been a long time ago, and this is just one example of that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, in regard to business item number 11, I know this was discussed early on in 2018 with the POA. Mr. City Attorney, maybe you can help with the thought process that I have. Right now, if the city passes an ordinance on signage, days, days per election, county standard's 45, the City of Canyon Lake, basically, the ordinance was read in 18, I don't know if I was reading the old one or not now, stated that it basically took on the POA's rules and regulations, which was a 60-day window. If the city, can the city pass an ordinance that states it's 30 days before the election or 45 days before the election? And if so, does the POA have to honor that, or can they still run with their own guidelines on sign regulations?
So, two-part question. I'm going to address the second part first, if I may, because it's a question that the city manager fielded earlier on a different topic. You know, the city has jurisdiction over health and safety over the entire city, not just that within the walls. The POA obviously has concurrent jurisdiction of its own pipe through the CCNRs over the POA. Our ordinances do not need to be in perfect harmony all the time. If we say 60 and they say 30, then if you're inside the gates, it's 30, and they're the ones that have to enforce it. If it's past 60, it would be us that could enforce it. So, we don't have to always be in perfect alignment. So, that's, that's the first thing. As to the second question, you'll notice if you are looking at a version of the ordinance that has a specific set of rules for political signs, that's the old version of the ordinance. The current version of the ordinance follows a US Supreme Court decision in the Town of Gilbert case that says, "We can't discriminate in our sign ordinance based off of the content of the sign." So, we have rules now for what are called non-commercial signs. So, that includes political signs, but it includes all other kinds of signs that aren't related to commercial businesses. So, you know, for example, a happy birthday sign, I saw one of my neighbors had happy 10th birthday- I saw one of my neighbors had happy 10th birthday for their daughter. They'd put it up in their front yard. That's a non-commercial sign. It's regulated in the same way. If the specific question is, how much can we regulate the time that a sign can be up? It'd be the kind of thing that I'd want to do further research on.
Yeah.
There are various court opinions going back to at least the 80s that I've read that say, okay, this amount of time is okay, this amount of time is too short, this amount of time is okay. Generally, the courts are going to be more supportive of an ordinance related to how soon you have to take it down after the event. They're going to be less supportive of us putting restrictions before an event. And I'll tell you where it gets particularly dicey is when you're talking about signs that, are they related to a specific election, or are they simply political in nature? I'm sure we can all think of flags and other signs that, you know, maybe are supporting a particular candidate or current office holder. And maybe that's simply political expression related to that person's feelings about that office holder. It may not have anything to do with an election. And so it becomes really, really hard to enforce that particular. Now, on the other side, there's obviously signs that are related to an election, so-and-so for this office. I think we get into, it gets really kind of into murky waters there. That's why I'd want to have that additional time, if that was the direction of the council.
I know for me, and I go and speak for myself, but I know that coming off of our election cycle, you know, the signs are always an issue, especially in this community. Not necessarily that they're there, just the length that they're there. You know, 60 days. I think, I think the P O A is 60 or 90, I forget. It's absurd, though. I mean, it's so long.
Months and months of signs.
Yeah, it's months. I mean, and it's just infinity.
Because there's the primary, and then we have the general election.
It's just forever, right? So I think that would be interesting, you know, to look into, to see. But now it's changed so much with, like you said, the Supreme Court taking it up and just the direction that they're looking at. So I'm just curious on the stance that Canyon Lake is going to take on it and if we do have any power because of the P O A and, you know.
It's sort of something I can research further and send a, perhaps a legal memo to the council informing them of my research. And if we want to bring further amendments to the sign ordinance, I can tell you I've gone through the current sign ordinance that we have discovered, the city clerk discovered, and my constitutional concerns with that ordinance were alleviated. I was a little shocked when I saw the original version. And so, but if you do want to look at, you know, adding some of those restrictions, I can certainly give some guidance on, you know, what the constitutional issues may be with enacting such an ordinance.
Absolutely.
I think you're going to have a real problem. I can understand local, and the local elections, not the days, but the signs is pretty on wires, and they're probably the same size, okay? But on a national level, in Canyon Lake, they're all signs, it is, of sizes, okay? And I don't know how they're on wall cars, they're on boats, they're on cars, they're on, I don't think you can restrict them. I don't, you can do that on a national level.
And I think that that's why our current ordinance does not discriminate based on the content of the sign. It doesn't matter if it's a local election, federal election, you know, happy birthday, I hate you, stop parking in front of my property, whatever that particular message is that someone is putting on that sign, it doesn't matter. We're regulating the size and the duration and the materials.
Absolutely. I think, I think the direction that I was giving the city attorney, Randy, is that, you know, looking at, you know, when you are a candidate for office and you pull papers, you get assigned ordinance at which time you can put your signs up. When we're looking at Canyon Lake as a whole in regards to, you know, maybe the office of the presidency or, you know, those hires, it's never going to happen. It's freedom of speech. It's the right to, you know, wave that flag and be proud of it. That's not, you know, where this is coming from. It's coming from the fact that the community, you know, when you drive around and you see a million signs, you know, 60 days before an election, and then, you know, the winds come through and they blow, and it's that kind of stuff. But I just wonder if ours is up to code? If we're, you know, what other cities are? Some cities are 45, some cities are 30, you know, so, and then it's seven days after the election to remove them. So just to make sure that we're, you know, up to code in that regards and that it's very clear for that candidate that they know when they have to, how much time they have to get their signs up and take them down.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, especially when you have a P O A election, which is every year, and the city council. And there's about a month or maybe two months between between all these signs.
Yeah.
And people get, think, we've had enough signs.
Yep. Very good. Cool. So there's really nothing to take up in this business item, right?
We thought there was going to be.
No.
But there's not.
Okay.
Do we, is there?
Do we need a motion? We read it?
Nope.
No, this is just information.
This is just information?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no motion necessary.
No motion necessary. And just for informational purposes, we will make sure we get the correct ordinance up on the city's website as we enter the nomination period next week. And we are already in contact with the vendor that codifies, so we're getting an update as far as to how quickly we're going to move on moving our ordinance to the website. So everything should hopefully be resolved very quickly.
Good.
Very good. Thank you. I'm going to move on to Mr. City Manager's comments.
Just a couple of things. Thank you. Con enforcement supervisor Gina Dixon mentioned this earlier, but I just want to really emphasize what a phenomenal job our staff did responding very quickly last week after the governor issued the order prohibiting dine-in, dining in restaurants. Right away, Tyler Ferrari and Gina Dixon and Jim Morrissey jumped on this and found a way to put together a temporary outdoor dining permit that can be applied for and issued to our restaurants free of charge using our existing procedures so that it didn't require any ordinance or anything like that. And we had, you know, right away, a couple of our restaurants that were able to fill out applications and be approved over the holiday weekend when, you know, our offices were closed. These staffers worked overtime to make sure that our restaurants were able to continue operating, and I just want to really thank them for all the work they're doing to help our businesses during these difficult times. On other COVID-19 news, we're encouraging cooperation with the order that the state and our county orders. You see, we're all wearing masks this evening, and we're all making the sacrifices that are being asked for us and encouraging everyone in the community to do the same. And lastly, we have a special meeting on Monday, the 13th, at 6:00 right here. Our consultant, E S C I, will be coming down, flying down to present the feasibility study on starting a fire department. Should be approximately about a two-hour meeting between the presentation and the discussion. As we've been operating here, because of COVID-19, the council chambers will not be open to the public, but we will be broadcasting the meeting on the cable TV channels and on our Facebook, live streaming on our Facebook page and on the website. So numbers the public can watch and submit public comment through the email as well. So I think we'll be publishing the agenda tomorrow for that. So at 6:00 on Monday. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go on to council members' reports, starting with Councilmember Bonner.
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone that the Railroad Canyon Exchange has started, and the ramps are going to be closed off and on for the next two years. And they're going to enforce 60 miles per hour. So we're going to have to really harden to get down to 60 when we're used to at 70 or whatever. So please be very careful. Let's make sure that this construction goes timely, and I think the end result is going to be incredibly good for Lake Elsinore and Canyon Lake and Menifee as far as that's concerned. So we're looking forward to that. The other thing I just want to mention, and the R C T C is dark in July, so we're not going to have a meeting this month. On the roundtable, and the last time we talked this, I don't know if we're, are we going to try to do the dining outside in the porch? But so our regularly scheduled roundtable, it would be Monday, Monday morning, the 13th. I asked Mike Barrow today to reach out to the country club to see if they could accommodate us for breakfast on the patio. And if not, then we'll probably have to move the meeting to a Zoom call. I haven't heard yet if he was able to get in touch with the country club. So we're still waiting on that.
Okay. But as soon as we can, because we only got one more day than that. One more day, Thursday. All right. Thank you. That's it. Okay, thank you. Mayor Proton Castillo.
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you to the city manager for your responsiveness regarding the algae information through Leshwa. That was a big deal for a lot of people in terms of the sampling and the information and the collaboration with the P O A and the water district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I wanted to give a shout out to Tyler because I was one of the people who was tagged in questions regarding the temporary outdoor seating, specifically related to the sports stop. I sent him a text. I responded on Facebook, and people were very pleased that the city was so responsive. So great job. I just saw that the urban has their outdoor seating. It looks great. You're probably going to get requests to keep it permanent because now it's a nice patio. So I guess stand by for that. I saw that we do have a new pizza place in the town center where the last park was previously located. So hopefully our Canyon Lakeers go out and support this new business. And then I wanted to personally thank law enforcement. I know you guys had your work cut out for you over the Fourth of July with fireworks calls and the like. A lot of positive feedback from our citizens for the extra patrol, and you are greatly appreciated in Canyon Lake. Welcome. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's been, because of COVID-19, most committees have been either Zoomed or are dark. The executive committee that I'm on for the RCA is still meeting, although our next one is going to be Zoom. One of the concerns that's going on right now is the B I A, which is the building industry, tracks, and they work very closely with RCA. The numbers aren't looking very good for construction starts, new starts in the fourth quarter. It looks like we are going to really have a negative impact on our community and our economy in this county. We're trying to look at other ways that we can work with the B I A and RCA and streamlining the permitting process. Some of the permitting processes that we're looking at is now go online and actually set the fees in advance with a 15-year freeze. B I A wants 20, which, when you say a 15-year freeze, that means that those fees are locked for developers to look for projects down line. They know upfront, they can pay them upfront, and yet not worry that there's going to be an increase. So that's kind of where we are. We're in the search for a new director, but because of the political climate going on at the county level right now, there's discussion of the future of this committee. And that means the committee will not go away. It will be a standalone, but it may be under another umbrella. And we've got discussions with two county organizations. One's W R Cobb, one's R T C. And they're very preliminary. Nothing is discussed, nothing is going to be done. There's similar things that both of those two committees have with RCA, even though RCA is tasked with our plan for protecting the habitat. And so there'll be more to come. We do have a Zoom meeting on the 22nd, which I'll be here to represent myself on this executive committee because some of the things we're working on right now that is time-sensitive is budget. So the rest of the committees that I represent have all been dark, and it's good to be back. It's good to see people, and it's good to have a council meeting that we've actually got us in the same room. So thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say thank you, everyone, for all the hard work, and I hope everyone had a very happy Fourth of July. I was very impressed with our community. I received a lot of phone calls leading up to the Fourth of July and concerns and issues, but Canyon Lake stepped up, and I think, you know, I think it was, obviously, from our sheriff's department, it was a very low-key weekend. So having the only game in town with a fireworks show, I think that's pretty impressive. So way to go Canyon Lake. I sit on Riverside Transportation, I sit on R T O, Riverside Transportation Agency, and, you know, COVID has been an impact for our bus drivers, very much so. Those poor, those poor employees are right in the thick of it, and we've seen the numbers come through, and they have to get tested regularly. The staff has done a phenomenal job at working around the issues and the problems with our bus drivers getting COVID, and it's been happening regularly. Luckily, there's been no fatalities. Everyone so far who's been tested has recovered. But I got to hand it to our organization that we're a part of, they've done a phenomenal job at coming up with a program to make it as safe as possible for their bus drivers. And, you know, hats off to all the people out there who are working through this pandemic and continue to do so. Other than that, I just want to say thank you so much for all the, all the phone calls and text messages from our community members on how we're doing as a city. We've done a lot of things right in the last couple of months, especially right in the middle of a pandemic, and I'm excited to see where the rest of the year goes. It's not all bad. I think we're doing some phenomenal things here at City Hall, and that's because of our amazing staff and all the hard work. So I just want to say thank you and try to enjoy a summer. Get out, go for a walk, get some exercise. You know, it's really important to do that, to not just be stuck inside and try to get some fresh air. It makes a big difference. So with that, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, now it's my turn. And I think I've been busier than I have been in quite some time, so I'm going to just highlight some of the things that have taken place. First of all, in our last vector meeting, we had some, this is the serious stuff, though. I just didn't have any fun stuff. I'll get it again, no. This is why the coronavirus won't be the end of it. The ongoing threat of vector-borne disease is reshaping our understanding of the dangers of a warming climate. There's a little, well, you can't see what I'm doing, I guess, but a small insect, the width of a human fingernail, it's a, it's a black mosquito of some type, sickens more people everywhere than an viral coronavirus influenza and cancer combined. So when we get rid of one thing, there's going to be another thing popping up, unfortunately. The, I've had several, I've had three, I guess, Zoom meetings with the various mayors in our Western Riverside County. And I'm just going to take some of the highlights of what it was that everybody has talked about without trying to condense this as much as I can. These are June, July meetings that we had. And most of the topics that were discussed, everybody always comes back to the same place. Neither opinions, of course, are not necessarily facts. The forecast for the last quarter of this year, we're expecting a mild recovery. Now, this is wishful thinking, your thoughts are not here. These are just notes that I've taken. There seems to be a consensus that the governor is holding the economy back. Now, I've only told you what I hear. This is not what I'm saying. Some even say that they miss Jerry Brown. Bankruptcy attorneys are very, very busy. Suicide hotlines are very busy. The CARES Act is creating an incentive not to work. People are making more money staying at home than when they did work. More money is needed from the federal government to go directly to the cities. Very important, houses are worth it needing to be opened. Mentally, this is just, this is a drag on the economy as well as on people's well-being. as well as on people's well-being. It was said that we're all on the lookout for some good news. Well, some of the good news that was reported today was that the real estate market is just going crazy. Not sure what the explanation is, but that's, well, the bad news that I may have to give you, this is some of the good news. Also, I attended, which is always my favorite, part of this job that I have, the student of the year presentation. It was all done on Zoom as well, but it was done quite well and it was quite likely that, and I was able to take some notes from which some of us elected officials had to say to the students were some foods for thought. So I took, I've got about three of them here that I was impressed the most with. And this is what was told to the students. "The years teach much which the days never knew. Remember experiences the name everyone gives to their mistakes. When you talk, you repeat what you already know. When you listen, you often learn something." And there are others, but I'm not going to read them all. It's just some of the highlights that I like to pick up. But to finish, finish my thoughts on something good to look out for, and it's hardly been mentioned here by some of our council members, is to, you know, we at the city, we were a little apprehensive about the P O A having the fireworks show since most of the other cities were canceling theirs. But guess what? Our citizens, they didn't let us down. It was a great turnout. Well-behaved. The police, the sheriff were treated so respectfully. And I can identify with that. And I don't know if one of you gentlemen, we parked in my driveway, but there was a sheriff's vehicle in my driveway the entire fireworks show. And as the people were walking down the causeway, they all stopped to say thank you. Some saluted. And certainly, we all appreciate what it is that you did. And it was a terrific morale booster. So, you know, in closing, I do a lot of doodling in my office every now and then. I was looking for something that might be a little bit upbeat that I could say. Years ago, when I was on the P O A board, there was some downtime in the, not just the city, but throughout the country. And I found something that I gave in one of my speeches or whatever you call it is that I do when I bore everybody at the end of a meeting. And it goes like this. And, you know, we should all make a greater effort to notice that the waves still break majestically on California's coasts as they have done without restraint since the dawn of time. We should acknowledge that the sun, without our command or applause, helps our crops grow and without permission gathers vapor from the salty ocean and delivers it back to us fresh and recycled as life-giving rain. We should notice that the hills are covered in living green velvet. Trees are leafing, birds are nesting, and flowers are blooming. Our abundant rains have brought us a particularly lovely rebirth of spring. So despite our man-made problems, we're blessed. So the smooth waves frown as we work our way out of our troubles. There are limitless reasons for us to smile. So I hope a few little words of encouragement, and I know everybody's having a difficult time, that might make somebody feel a little bit better.
Mayor, before you close, can I make a final comment before you adjourn?
Of course. And I think I'm through.
I'd like to close this meeting on Jim McGill. He died at 94. He did so much for this community over the years. I think he may be the only person I know that may have lived as long in Canyon Lake as you there. But he didn't just play golf or involve golf. He, he made flags on all over the golf course, every hole, had two flags, did it around the driving range and around the entrance. So we're going to have a celebration live tomorrow at 6 o'clock. And I'd just like to join, adjourn the meeting in the name of Jim McGill. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you say at 6 o'clock?
Yes, they moved it from 4 to 6.
I was going to say, I thought that would change it. Yes, Jim was also good at taking our football money, too, wasn't he, Randy? Well, thank you for that. That was very kind of you to mention. I believe that that's all there is. Other than announcing that our next meeting will be, where we have our next meeting, on Monday at 6 o'clock, a special meeting. Our regular city council meeting will be August the 5th at 5:00 p.m. for closed session and 6:30 for open session. And with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 8:31. Thank you all for participating.